And we're live.
Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Finance, Tuesday the 20th of October, 2020. Councilmember Wyatt. Councilmember Bowman.
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski. Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember.
I am here if you can hear me.
That's President Bridgen.
Here, and someone has their mic open so we can barely hear.
Yeah, Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Councilmember Fairlott. Cormus President.
All right, everyone. Welcome to today's Buffalo County Council on Finance Committee. Today, we are going to take items two and three out of order in respect of the Buffalo Police Department's time. And so, Sean, if you could call item number two.
Item number two, approval through new contract Western New York Polygraph Services.
Okay, item number two, we have Captain Ronaldo to speak on this item. If you could just give us a brief summary.
Sure. So every year, the Buffalo Police Department employs the use of a polygraph service to conduct criminal investigations. It's mostly utilized in both our special Victims Unit as well as our homicide unit. It varies year to year, the number of polygraphs that are conducted. Could be anywhere from a handful to a dozen or so, depending on the nature of the cases that either one of those units has to investigate.
Okay, and with that, I see the contract is for fifty, fifteen thousand, but it could be anywhere up to fifty thousand. That's the cap?
I believe that's the cap, but in we've almost never in my tenure here seen it get anywhere near that the top dollar amount.
Understood. Councilmembers, any questions? Not seeing any.
Councilmember. Thank you. I think we had a conversation about this before, and I think that we were not comfortable with it being a cap on it. And I asked before, what was the length of time or how much was it in the past? And it was nowhere near fifty thousand, so I'm uncomfortable with us having a cap. I mean, I think we should go by what we had in the past, and I think that's, you know, over the last three years, it should give us some clear, a better understanding of what that amount is.
Okay. What would you like me to do with the item? Or it looks like Donna, Commissioner Estrich, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I mean, looking at their past history, it went between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, so I'm okay with saying twenty. If we're gonna put it through, we can put it through. With twenty thousand as opposed to being a cap of fifty.
Okay. So what would we need to do on that? Approve with a condition or?
I would approve it being that the cap on it would be twenty thousand.
Okay. Motion to approve with condition.
Approve with condition with cap of twenty thousand.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski. Item number three.
Item number three, permission to accept funding under 2020 Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant.
Items open.
Okay, item is open. If you could also give us a little background in this item as well, Captain.
Sure. So the JAG grant, the total award that I believe you guys have in front of you is two hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and one dollars. Of that, thirteen thousand, eight thirty-four is designated to go to the town of Cheektawaga. That's predetermined by the funder. The city of Buffalo receives two hundred and two thousand, six sixty-seven. The vast majority of that money is spent by the department to conduct police services, a large-scale public events. So anything that is deemed a mass gathering, it pays for additional officers to police those events. We look at the size of the event. We look at how many attendees are going to potentially be there. And these are all events that are held in public spaces. They're not charged for events per se. So they're, for instance, Italian Festival Taste of Buffalo, the Pride Festival, Dingus Day, Allentown Art Festival, Juneteenth. The list goes on and on, but that's what the majority of that money is spent on. There is approximately thirty thousand dollars, or I should say about twenty-six thousand dollars, that goes to the DA's office for a juvenile prosecutor dedicated position, as well as approximately forty-five hundred hours goes to central police services to provide software security, as I'm sure you're where central police services houses a vast majority of our databases, networks, and servers for our police side of our data works processing, so.
All right, thank you. Councilmembers, do we have any question?
Just.
Councilmember Rivera.
How's the money restricted? Can it be used for overtime or is it just for salary?
I believe it is used for overtime, so it's to bring additional police resources to those events.
Okay, very.
All right, Councilmember Wyatt.
Okay, so the fact that we don't have, we haven't had, we're not gonna have Juneteenth. We didn't have it last year. We may not have it this year. In lieu of the fact that we were trying to get tasers, and we were told that the money that was used for the tasers was used for whatever, why can't we use this money towards the tasers?
Sure. So this money, it's my understanding would take effect in 2022. That's when this grant period is for. It is very specific for additional police resources, meaning manpower to be brought to events. It is not an equipment line grant.
Was that what it was used now? Didn't we get this grant last year?
We receive the grants every year, so this year, we're still spending down, I believe, last year's award, or I should say, look current 2020 award. Some of the money was spent toward some of the protests.
So. So the fact that we didn't have those events. Hello?
Councilmember.
Hello?
Background.
Okay. The fact that we didn't have those events this year, where is the money going then? Is that money still available to us?
Yes, the money is available until we spend it.
And you said it cannot be used for any type of purchase of any equipment. It's just for, simply for manpower?
Simply to bring additional police resources to mass gathering events.
Okay.
One question. I have a question.
Councilmember Rivera.
We have two hundred and some odd dollars for this grant that restricted to the things that you mentioned. And that's fine. If we can take that money and use it towards that, can then we take money that was allocated for those things? If it was overtime or with something else, and then use that money for the tasers?
I believe part of our budget every year is based on receiving this JAG grant. We've been receiving this grant for a number of years. The JAG grant pays approximately seventy-five percent of the cost of the police, additional police personnel for those events. So I believe in L.L. Donna, I saw her hand up there to explain it better, but this, this money is kind of relied upon as part of that process, but Donna.
Commissioner, what's this?
The police department, if you look at their budget line, they have approximately a million dollars every year in grant reimbursements, and JAG is part of that reimbursement. So that is already part of our revenue stream for the budget.
Okay, all right, so we can't use money from other lines for the tasers while we're talking about the grants. Is there any thought right now of making the tasers a priority somewhere?
I can tell you, sir, that we have continued our conversations all along with TASER. We, obviously, when COVID hit and restrictions, we were not able to do any type of training. The TASER is a very intensive training program, so we weren't able to conduct the training. So purchasing something that we wouldn't be able to use at the time didn't make a lot of sense. We are currently looking at a possibility of getting some amount of tasers into the department. We're working with the vendor to determine exactly what that cost would be. It is, I've said before, the tasers are a recurring fee, so there's a, it's not like you buy them and you're done. There's basically a licensing that goes along with the TASER device, month after month, paid out basically on a yearly basis, much like the body cam program is. But we are looking at what we could potentially deploy in terms of numbers that would make sense to have enough of the devices available for the majority of patrol that would be working any given shift.
Okay, and what's the timeframe for doing that?
For, I'm sorry.
For the tasers that you just mentioned, that you're looking to make sure the patrol division has. I mean, do you have a time period? Is there? I just want to know because, you know, we're talking about less lethal weapons in real time right now because of incidences that are happening. And certainly, the common council felt it was priority when we approved it. You brought it to us, we approved it, and the money was used for other things, but it was a priority, and I thought the case was made that was priority. And we had buy-in from the police department. It's still the same, still have the same priorities. It hasn't changed at all. If anything, it has escalated because of incidents that have happened in recent past with regards to use of deadly physical force. So we, it is a priority for this common council. We've heard from the different groups that are out there. They're looking at less lethal weapon, and we want to make sure the police department has it. I think this will reduce the liability that city has on the other end in terms of future lawsuits as well. So I think this is something that we have to revisit, and I just want to know, where is it in terms of priority, in terms of timing? Because we certainly want that to come before us once again, so we can vote on another contract for tasers.
Sure. So currently, what we are exploring is the training requirement in terms of what it takes to issue the devices to each officer. And then we're looking at our current training schedule. So because of our accreditation status, we are required to provide twenty-one hours of training to every officer in the department, every sworn member of the department. There was almost a five-month period where we conducted no training, so we are definitely in the process now of trying to catch up on just our required state training. And then we're looking at how we would factor in training, which I believe it's almost another eight hours of training just for the TASER device to the officers. So the academy is currently doing a little research to determine when exactly they would be able to get that additional training in place for the officers, what that timeline looks like. Once they have that developed, we will present that information to the commissioner so that he can make a determination to move forward.
Thank you, Captain. Any other questions? Councilmember Rivera?
I have some more. Mr. Chair.
Okay. Councilmember Wyatt, then Council President.
Oh, no, you can let Council President go.
Council President.
So, Mr. Chair, thank you. The tasers, I think the, Councilmember Vera brought it right around to what I think the point is, is the importance of the TASER program and what this council has set as a priority. The, there were tasers out there. What happened to the ones that were already on the street?
We, we only had approximately twenty devices on the street, and that was only as part of our pilot project. So the pilot project ended, and those devices were taken back. Some of them needed to be repaired. There was a couple of issues with some of the cartridges, as well as some of the holsters. But it was strictly for a pilot project that was only conducted in the B District.
Because in the, it's better to have twenty if, than to have zero. And even if it were given to several officers in the district who could respond quickly. I think my concern in the council's concern, majority of the council members, is that with none of them being on the street at all, that we kind of leave ourselves open for another incident. And I mean, these incidents are sometime costing us, you know, a million dollars or at least hundreds of thousands of dollars. And then with pending litigation for other cases could potentially cost the city in the millions of dollars. I think that when we cost it out, that is less expensive to pay a fee every month than it is to pay or settle a lawsuit. This is, it can, do you have to outfit the whole department?
No, so the modified plan that we're looking at, so as to avoid the five-hundred-thousand-dollar fee that was originally going to be the yearly fee. I'm looking at putting ten devices in each district, and officers would share the weapons. So in other words, on each platoon that's working in all five districts, there would be at least ten officers equipped. In order to do that, though, you still have to train basically the entire patrol force, which is about five hundred and twenty-five, give or take, officers. So the training is where it becomes time-consuming to get that many officers in for an eight-hour training in order to properly deploy it. If you go any less than ten of the devices, say you only do one or two per district, what happens when the officer that has a TASER is stuck at a crime scene or down on an arrest or at the hospital with a prisoner? Then the weapons aren't available. So we feel comfortable thinking that ten per district should put enough of those devices in the hands of enough officers on any given shift that we would have one readily available should an event develop that would warrant its use. The issue is, we have three shifts per district, five districts, twenty-four-seven operations, so that's a lot of officers that we still have to train. Additionally, the program that TASER offers is called the Officer Protection Program. With, if you buy a TASER for each officer, part of the fee for that TASER that's recurring is unlimited training cartridges, as well as unlimited renewal cartridges and unlimited use cartridges. So every time an officer would deploy a TASER, instead of spending thirty-five hours to replace the cartridge, it's included as part of your package.
But when the, and I'll end with this, when the trial was going on, who was carrying them? Because you didn't have every officer with them then.
Correct. We just trained twenty officers based on, I believe, volunteer status in the Bravo District.
Okay, just in Bravo. All right. So I think you heard from Councilmember Vera and others how important this is. I would hope that we move, that your department would move expeditiously so that we minimize police officers, if not eliminate, having to reach for their service weapon and have a, an alternative way. This is, it's just important, and I thank you for more specifics of what you are looking for, because I think that's what people are waiting for. What's the specifics? What are you doing? When can you report back to us with the progress of this?
I can speak with the Commissioner in the next day or so about it, and I should have something for you in the next week or two, I would think.
And finally, the police oversight, because I think some of this should be being vetted and police oversight once a month, as we talked about. Have you all come up with a date yet for the next police oversight?
Yeah, yes, we do. I believe it's November the twelfth or the eleventh. Eartha's on. He can, it's been confirmed by the Commissioner.
We laid it out for the rest of the year, Majority Leader, like for December.
We, our goal is to lock in the meetings for the rest of the year quarterly, so we don't have to go back and forth. That is our goal. That's what we had requested. But we do have a date for November. Eartha, you have it in front of you?
November tenth at eleven AM, sir.
November tenth, eleven AM.
So would, could there be an update at police oversight on the tasers in November?
Sure, I'm just making a note, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council President. And Captain, on that, for that meeting, could we have a breakout of the reoccurring extensions that you mentioned? I know you said there are some costs associated, so it'd be nice to have that detail as well.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Captain, I really want to reiterate, and I guess everyone has already said it, the importance of us having the tasers, and I don't want to go beat a dead horse. You know, it still bothers me that money was reallocated for something that was critically important for some other use, which, you know, the council didn't get a chance to weigh in, and that still burns me. We're still waiting on requests from the police department regarding reports and those type of things. And, you know, I'm hopeful that during a police oversight, we can have those reports. It's just not fair, and it's not respectful to me that we submit requests and no one ever gets back to us. They just kind of ignore us, and it kind of goes along with the tasers. The tasers were taken off the table, the money was spent, and it was never brought to the council until after the fat. Is that the way we're going to continue to do business going forward? I'd hope not. I think that we should be brought up to speed on things, especially when the issue regarding the tasers, number one, has been front and center as far as less use of deadly force. So I'm hopeful to get those updates, as you stated, at the police oversight, as well as the reports. I requested reports from Internal Affairs. We have not gotten them yet. You know, I don't understand why. Can you tell me why?
I can't speak to what reports you requested from Internal Affairs. I'd be more than happy to look into what you requested. I can tell you that depending on what it is you've requested, we have been absolutely slammed with FOIL requests for disciplinary records. It's a monumentous task. I was hand-delivered a letter from the District Attorney's Office that now, as part of discovery, every officer that has to appear in court, we have to turn over their discipline record as well as case summaries. It's really been a challenge to just meet all of the demands just on the discovery basis, along the other reports.
And Captain, please don't let, don't, don't get me wrong. I understand you have a lot of requests, but I think the requests from the common council are equally as important, and that's my point. If we can make sure that we get the district attorney information, why would we not be able to get information to the elected body of the city of Buffalo? I mean, I think we're on the same level. I don't think they're any more important. I'm not going to say we're going to tell you to not do something for the district attorney, but certainly the respect of getting back to the council and letting us know what the update is on whatever the situation is, I think that we deserve that, don't you?
I absolutely do, sir, but as I said, I'm not sure all the requests you, you, oh, if Malcolm Earth, you email, I will likely do the best.
Okay. I'll take you up on that, and Mr. Eartha, if you can make sure the captain gets our requests, I certainly would appreciate it, and we look forward to hearing more from you during the police oversight, Captain. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Captain. Anyone else? I don't see. All right, motion to send without rec.
To send without rec.
Seconded by Councilmember Wyatt. Back to the top, Sean, can we call item number one?
Item number one, Fitch Ratings Incorporated, Buffalo, New York, downgrade.
Then I believe we have the Controller's Office Deputy Controller, Delano Dial.
I guess this item has been, we've been talking about this for the past two or three, two or three weeks now, so I'm not sure if you guys have any additional questions in regards to the Fitch downgrade.
Only question I would have is the cost to the city of Buffalo, the downgrade. What does it mean in terms of actual dollars? Can that be calculated?
Well, at this point, we wouldn't know because we won't go to bond market until spring of twenty twenty-one. And then at that time, I mean, our rating is low, but we do have two other rating agencies that will also look at the city of Buffalo. So hopefully, things are better when we go to the market in spring of twenty twenty-one. It could be based off market conditions, and it also can be also based off the city of Buffalo financial situation.
At what point can you guesstimate what the cost to the city? At what point? When you go to bond market or before you go to bond market, you have an idea?
Like within, let's say if we go to bond market in April twenty twenty-one, so sometime in April, possibly in March of twenty twenty-one, we have a general idea what rates they would charge the city for the borrowing.
And we'd like to know what the cost is as a result of the downgrade.
We will. I mean, it has to come through you guys anyway, so we will let you know.
Thank you.
Any other councilmembers?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Okay, Deputy, our next opportunity to be reviewed, is that February, or is that, are we looking at next October?
By Fitch?
Yes.
I know they, they did a file, like they, probably next year, same time, probably the same time around next year. But one thing the Fitch group did indicate to us that they will, if, hopefully, if we do receive federal aid and look at the city financial situation in the, in the spring, they will do another review of the city, and at that point in time, we'll see if it will remain the same or if we'll go down.
We didn't, we didn't pass a, the capital budget item as of yet, did we?
No, right now, the CPC just submitted it to the mayor. I believe the mayor have until, I want to say, I believe, November first, and then it goes to your group.
Okay, okay.
You have the CPC one in front of you today.
Yeah, well, well, I'll wait till we finish, go to the, get to the item, so, thank you, sir.
When are the other agencies?
Well, I mean, right now, like S and P and also Moody's, when they choose to review the city, it could be at any point in time that they request to sit with the city, to sit with the Controller's Office, also the administration to go over the finances at the city.
Okay. Okay. Any other councilmembers?
Can, Mr. Chair? Have we ever had the finance chair involved in those meetings? Why is it just the administration and Controller?
To my knowledge, no, and I believe we asked that, we asked that question to, when we got graded by Moody's last year, and I don't know if it was yourself or if it was the prior finance chair in regards to sitting in the room, but I think it was more to a point, trying to make, they don't want to make it political at the end of the day. They're going to come in and review city finances based off their review and not allowing politics or anything to get through it.
Yeah, well, my point, and I think any finance chair's point in sitting in the meeting certainly wouldn't be a political one. It's just right now, in the status, the status of where the city is, I would think that us all hearing the same information is equally as important. So I don't think anybody, well, should go in there. I totally agree. Shouldn't be going there having some political agenda. It should be strictly on the performance and the future issues or concerns that whoever has regarding the finance of the city. So that would be my only reason wanting to be there, certainly wouldn't be politicizing anything.
Okay, well, that's understood, but the thing is, Fitch will submit, any rating agency, they will come and submit, let's say, ten to fifteen questions they have in regards to city finances. It's a number of questions that can be answered by the administration, and then a number of questions that will be answered by the Controller and her team. So then, once we have, we answer the questions for Fitch, and then Fitch go with their finance group, and then they look at city finances and they make a judgment, and then they submit this report that we're looking at now. So we're just answering questions in regards to finance of the city. So instead of them assuming responses, they ask us to prepare responses for them, and then they separately go and review the city finances and produce a report.
So would it be a problem, me just being a fly on the wall, coming in and just listening? Is that, would that be a problem?
I mean, as long as you're comfortable with what's being reviewed, and we have no, I don't, I mean, if that's something you want with the next rating agency that come through, then we'll have a conference. I'll discuss with the Controller, and I'm pretty sure Commissioner Estrich was, would discuss with the mayor.
Okay, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Councilmember, I'm mute.
I don't want to attribute politics to the mayor's office, to Controller's office, or to the common council. I believe that it's important that the Controller be at many of these meetings that the council has, that the administration and the finance committee as well, or the finance chair going forward. I mean, we're in times where I think transparency is so important that we're at the table. I believe the Controller should be at these meetings. There are times the Controller is not at the meetings, and she should be at the meetings. And the same, same thing with the finance chair. We make very important decisions, and information is, is very important to us, and having somebody at the table to report back to this. uh to report back to this body is very important to us as well. So I am for, I don't want to attribute politics and um uh motivations to anybody. I think that these are um very important times, and I think we all need to be at the table, including the finance chair, so I hope that the Controller is included in all our meetings, uh that the finance chair is included and the administration as well, and I think we should all be open to that.
Well, that that's understood, but just to clarify, to come, I sit with the Controller daily. I go over numbers with the Controller daily along with uh our remaining, our other three deputies that's on this call, so she do attend uh the meetings uh with the the rating agencies. Uh, and I also have a follow-up. I discuss every council meeting and finance meeting that I attend, I sit with the Controller at least two days out of the week to make sure I'm prepared. So anything that I'm saying is a conversation I have with her on a daily basis, but as would Councilmember Rashid Wyatt asks, if he want to sit on the room, I mean, he he can sit in and and go over the responses that we go over uh with the with with the rating agencies. As long as he's comfortable with the data that's being shared, then we don't, I don't see a problem with that going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, on this motion, Councilmember, what is it, the table or receiving file? Councilmember Wyatt?
Table.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski. And Sean, if you could call last item?
Item number four, Citizens Planning Council Budget and Bond Sale Recommendation.
Item's open.
All right, this item is open. I um, I believe some of the members that we invited uh were not able to make it or we didn't get the request out on time, so I believe the administration the Commissioner Estrich can field some broad questions, but uh why not have all the answers? So council members uh or or Commissioner Estrich, do you want to do a a little summary on this item? Uh, you're on mute. Commissioner, you're on mute.
Sorry, I'm going to have um Jessica Brown. She's the Director of Administration and Finance, and she worked to help put this together, so I think she can go over the list with you.
Great, thank you.
Hey, Jessica Brown, Director of Administration and Finance. The C P C recommended the budget that was submitted, which includes um capital improvements around the City of Buffalo. There's some large improvements for the Buffalo Fire Department, including Engine twenty-five. There's also some building improvements for mostly for safety reasons. There's um cultural organization improvements, which are partially because of matches with grants and partially because of safety reasons again. And um also a large item is for the infrastructure for our streets and sidewalks, and um there's also some improvements to the parks, the tree removal, general improvements, some fleet maintenance. And then lastly is for our streets division is um some general packers, trucks and street sweepers. Overall, the recommendation is at the Controller's cap of thirty-two million nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Thank you. I believe some of the council members were asking for a breakout um or were looking for a breakout on some of the larger items, like you mentioned, like the uh parks improvements or even the city buildings line. Uh, so I don't know if you'd be prepared to answer questions on that, but I I'll open it up to council members at this point. Council members, any questions?
I have a question.
Councilmember Rivera.
Um, I believe it was maybe two years ago, um, two to three years ago, we had done authorized, but on the issue for Grant Street, it was supposed to be a matching um between Assemblymember Sean Ryan and the City of Buffalo. Um, and I noticed that that has disappeared. I haven't seen it. Is it in, is it somewhere?
I can check into that. I'll let you know.
Okay, i- it's very important because once the city committed to authorize and unissue, I went and spent um discretionary money to issue some community engagement. Um, and if, and and we did engage the community, and the process is ongoing right now, but for some reason, that's disappeared, and I'm trying to figure out why uh once it's authorized and unissued uh to take it out of, I mean, I just don't know where it went to. I I just don't see it.
Okay, I can look into that, and um Commissioner Finn could probably get back to you about that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Estrich, did you have something to say on that?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Council.
Councilmember Wyatt, or Wingo, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Uh, I'm I'm just curious, uh, we had a young child get run over by a car in Trinidad Park. And we've been trying to make our appeal um to the C P C uh capital budget to have uh modifications made to that park for the last three, four years. And I'm just curious as to, you know, I see that the M L K Casino Kitchen has a build out of uh three hundred fifty thousand dollars. I'm just curious if you can look into possibly um seeing what is going to take for us to get that Trinidad Park to finally get the necessary repairs so that it will be safe for children to utilize that park, because I've closed that park down for la- for the last three years after the young lady, that the the big little baby uh got hit with a car. So um I'm really curious and interested to know how long it's going to take before we see Trinidad Park on a capital improvement budget.
Okay, I can look into that. Uh, excuse me, you do have to remember, this is the C P C's recommendation. This is not the mayor's recommendation.
Okay, well, thank you.
But we really can't speak to what they put on or what they didn't put on.
Exactly. I think that's uh we'll probably have this item back for the Chairman of the C P C to come and report, because I I have the same questions I was before the committee and presented a project, and I'm not necessarily seeing that project before me. Um, and I have a a lot of residents that that want to see that project, so I'm very interested to kind of see the the breakout and to see if those uh projects are in there. Um, Councilmember, if you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, Jessica. Thank you for being here. I just, do you know the uh the item that was uh submitted to all of us that has um the project, but then has three um separate columns? It's the one that's fourteen dash twenty, um sold in twenty twenty-one, and then the next one, new project sold in twenty twenty-one. And then the last column being twenty twenty-one, new A and U and I. Um, can you just walk us through what's the the difference between these columns? I don't know if they're previous. I mean, I know that um King Urban Life last year in C P C was awarded, um, but they didn't, they didn't spend it, so I know um because they were waiting for a matching grant, so that it's going to be in this year's C P C, but if you could just kind of walk me through the difference between these columns.
Um, sure, and like I, like Donna said, this is the C P C's budget, um, but I was just giving a general overview, and the mayor's budget will come later this month, but um the first column, the fourteen to twenty authorized in an issue, that means that they have, there's already been a resolution for those items, but they haven't been sold, so they they're recommending that they be sold in twenty twenty-one. The next column, new projects sold in twenty twenty-one, are new projects that were requested for this year that they're recommending be sold for this year. And the last column, twenty twenty-one, new authorized and issued are items that um were recommended or were um requested, but we're not going to sell. The C P C is not requesting to sell them this year. They think they could sit there, they could have a bond resolution made, and then possibly be sold next year or um maybe have an interfund loan or something like that. And there's also other reasons, um possibly like a grant match. So columns E and F are what the C P C are recommending to be sold in twenty twenty-one.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask your question?
Yeah, that would fit perfectly. Um, that makes a lot of sense, you know, while I read this, so now, um, and then where it says, and I and I know that it it's meant to be broad, but there is for the new projects and citywide park improvements. Um, there's a new, um, you know, for a hundred and seventy-five thousand. I just wanted to make sure I have a a project for uh Hank Noack Park in my district, and I just want to make sure that um it's included in this general, but I'm I'm assuming that'll be a question for Commissioner Rab and Ben.
Yeah.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else?
Yes, Chair.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you. Um, okay, I guess we got some other than the thirty-two million dollars that we're talking about approving, I'm still not comfortable with that at this point until we can find our way through where we are and where we're going, uh, because we certainly don't know. Um, secondly, I'm concerned that when a council member puts a project forward, the C P C has to make it a yea or nay. How is it that we only get three hundred thousand dollars? So why wouldn't our projects be, you know, approved? You know, as a council member, it's not, this is not part of the mayor, this is the council member. The you, right now, we're talking about thirty-two million dollars, and of that thirty-two million, we have two point seven. And our items are not approved?
That would be a conversation with the C P C of what's included.
Okay, okay, so so again, we can put the, put the, put, put the point the finger at the C P C, but many of those people on the C P C are mayor appointees, and he he has a lot of input in it. So we're going to have to have a further conversation about this. I'm not going to go over it right now. But once the C P C Chair comes, we're going to have to have some conversation, because when a council member puts something forward and we only get three hundred thousand dollars, how is it our projects aren't included? I mean, how is it? Because we don't even know the status of the projects in many cases, if those projects have been completed, um, where the where the status is. I mean, my office has to call regularly to find out where we are on our projects. We, I put a whole lot of money in for speed humps, and I have not gotten an update where we are with our speed humps. That was from last year, this year. You know, we we got to get some more clarity, but again, my major point is that if a council member puts a three hundred thousand dollar project forward, why is it that we can't make certain that that three hundred thousand goes through? Because again, it's a small portion of the budget. It's not, it's less than five percent. So we can all be mom. It's okay. So when the next, when the chairman comes, we're going to get some more answers, because again, I'm going to drive this point home. We get three hundred thousand, we should be getting a million or so. It's a twenty-four, twenty-two million dollar capital budget and how this thing goes down, and it doesn't make certain that the council member who's responsible for his district and is responsible for delivering to his constituents doesn't get the approval, that the C P C has to approve, go, you know, thumbs up or thumbs down on our project. That just doesn't seem like it makes a lot of sense for a small portion of money.
All right.
So I'll wait, we'll wait till the next, the the chairperson comes to give us more answers. Um, but I'm still not comfortable approving thirty-two million dollars in not us not knowing where we're going, and secondly, that a council member puts projects forward and they're not certain that we're going to get them. I see a lot of money being spent elsewhere. I don't see a lot of money spent in the university district, and that's a concern for me, because I need to deliver for my residents, and if I'm not delivering, you know, hey, we might as well get somebody else. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Wyatt. Councilmember Noakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a quick question for Commissioner Estrich, because I know that she's a City Hall veteran. But what is the history of C P C? Did the city always uh, you know, have a C P C to uh to decipher these projects?
Um, I believe it's per the charter, and it goes to the C P C first, and then it gets to the mayor, and then the mayor submits it to council.
Gotcha. Okay, so it's it's within our term. Thank you.
Councilmember, uh, anyone else? All right.
I have one question. It it's regarding C P C and it uh um in their responsibilities. Um, my sense is, based on twelve years that I've been on the Common Council, we go before C P C and give our five-minute spiel, and they ask us, what are your priorities? What's your first, second and third? And then you're done, and normally, nothing happens with your request. Um. Uh, so my concern is C P C, as Councilmember Rashid Wyatt had mentioned, these are appointees. And normally, they follow either O S P or Public Works. That seems to be where the decisions are made, actually. Administration, um, O S P and Public Works. Um, so I really don't know the function, how effective that C P C is, obviously. Uh, the Common Council does have vote in this. At some point, the Common Council will approve the the capital budget, and that's where uh we have our leverage and uh, but as far as the C P C, um, that's been my experience with C P C, and I wish they were more in tune with what's happening in our respective neighborhoods. We represent the people closest, um the people that are affected. Uh, we're right there, right in front. They, sometimes people think we're mini mayors. They think we can get everything done, and they don't know that we're not mini mayors, we're council members, and we have to work with the administration. And sometimes uh we get blamed for things we have no control over, and C P C is one of them. Uh, they blame us for that. We have no control over C P C and their recommendations. And I wish they would listen more to the council council members who are more connected to their respective uh districts, so uh going forward, I think we should look at C P C, the trend, because it just, it just doesn't seem that they're listening to the Common Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I think that's everyone. At this point, uh, we'll have a further discussion with um the Chairman of the C P and this item comes up, so can I have a motion to?
Look, table.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Councilmember Wyatt. Thank you, everyone.